Welcome, everybody. This is a special meeting work session for Mason County. On September 5th, 2024, today we're meeting with our legislative delegation to discuss our county priorities and issues. And we're going to go ahead and start with you guys. Anything you'd like to say before we start?
No, let's go. Happy to work with Mason County. Thank you for inviting us.
Yep. All right. Do you want to take the list, Mark?
Sure, absolutely. So I guess the one that wanted to start it off, giving you guys an opportunity to kind of talk about some of the priorities that you might have going into 2025? Or do you just want to talk about Mason County?
I mean, I guess we can. I mean, he's got, we got together paths and he's got some that he's doing specifically and that I'm doing specifically. To continue the conversation we had about community sexually violent predators being released, we still want to give counties more say. And we want to give them veto power, which is the hardest thing to accomplish. We did, I don't know, last year, we told you that we worked aggressively with Thurston County. Deb was involved in giving them, empowering them to say no. And they did it through the zoning process, which I think you guys have that right and responsibility, and it worked great there. So I encourage you to look at those opportunities if there's, if any SVPs are being proposed to be released into Mason County. But we're doing a, I'm working specifically, and Travis is, both of us, on a comprehensive sexually violent predator program. Once they exit their term of incarceration and still deemed a danger to society. We're looking for a gradual step down process, an actual plan, if you will. Once you go from the Special Commitment Center to the, what we call an SETF, I forgot what SETF.
Secure Community Transition.
Yeah, so it's a transition facility with a lot of security, then a modified SETF, and then community release. But then all of those step downs would actually have to meet criteria. It's a very big bill, a very big bill. It's almost rewriting the entire sexually violent predator law in the state of Washington. Some of the difficulties are is for this because they're being, they're civilly committed. These individuals are, some of this, these concepts are kind of extra constitutional. So we want to make sure that we, when we, when we fix it, that we don't get into a possibility of the courts overruling us and say, oh, no, this is unconstitutional. But the main premise behind it is community safety and security. We have citing plans, what the citing, safety and security for all levels of these would, would be. We also want the state to run all of them. So the, the counties and everyone would have the state to go to, to say, if they're not doing it right. Right now, I think if you remember right, some of the problems we have in community releases sexually violent predators is extra. It's outside the law that we passed in that special contractors are being hired. And those special contractors, we actually don't have a legal mechanism to get in the middle of, unfortunately, so we're trying to fix that. That's along with quite a few, that, that is a bulk of my work in the interim because it is a big project. But we're looking at a lot of transportation. How are we going to tie in different transportation areas? I know I've met Commissioner Netherlands a couple of times on, you know, some ideas that the county has to. How do we start to move the county's transportation process or planning to match with what we're going to see in the Belfer bypass when it finally gets here? And we're still pretty happy about that in that I think it's on track right now. And we're still going to be moving dirt in 26. I'm pretty confident of that. I don't know that we will have all of the funds to fully do it, but we'll definitely have the funds to get the road built with the current monies. And I think it'd be, I think it's a project that we're going to finally get done. And that's pretty much what I got. I know Travis has got a lot that he's working on right now, too. Many other things I'm working on, but the things that the county probably would have the most interest.
So Dan, on the one you're working on, curiosity, the transition facility, what about locations?
We're going to do, we're going to, we're spending a significant amount of time on citing and citing responsibility from the state's perspective. Citing responsibility on the purveyor, whether the state, we're going to give the state the opportunity to do contract, but the state is the contractor. And, and how do we interact with the counties and cities that these are going to be located in? Specifically, where are we going to put them? Unfortunately, we're talking about putting them right in the middle of community. And we get a lot of pushback from Disability Rights Washington and that kind of thing if we want to put any, put, you know, stricter parameters around it. But what we want to do is really change the way we think about the citing of these, making them, putting them in different areas, especially the SETFs, the higher, more secure facilities. They shouldn't be in community. We could get to a point in time where we talk about what community placement looks like. Now, I want to be clear about this. I don't feel comfortable about secured community transition. The problem is for this law to be legal, there has to be an ability for them to move from the Special Commitment Center to community. And what we want is a absolute gradual step down. Where in all of it, they're learning the life skills, they're learning their expectations, they're also completing all of their treatment. The, the treatment is the most important, the sexual adverse, I can't remember the whole acronym, but, but it's, it's industry standard. So yes, we're adding a lot of efforts going to be put in to make sure you guys are mostly in the driver's seat about where they go.
I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Of course, this is kind of a non-exhaustive list, but of course, capital budget, still focused on funding for infrastructure and economic development. I think those are the biggest bang for our buck here, and especially in rural parts of our county. So we'll look forward again to your revised capital budget list from last time around, given what we've already accomplished or what needs to be accomplished that's new. But definitely, I, I think we had some, some great wins in the, in the last term, the last two years. So looking forward to continuing those and continuing to build out Mason County with the infrastructure that we need. Along with that, I see review of jail study, so excited to hear about that. But, you know, I guess one of the things, and we might hear about it, but, you know, what, what's the, the long-term vision path forward with the jail? I know that's going to be a heavy lift for any community, but, you know, we're crossing that Rubicon where we need to, we need to have a plan in place, I believe. With, with that comes police staffing. Obviously, that's a problem across the state, really exacerbated here. I know we've pushed forward, I've pushed forward, you know, bills to help funding of law enforcement for staffing retention, hiring bonuses, et cetera. But then also public defenders as well, which is a huge problem here. It's a problem across the state. It's like, I would estimate a $200 million problem across the state. But as you talk to public defenders, even if you gave them $200 million, they wouldn't know how to spend it all, right? And so it's, it's a problem. I know Dan is on the, the task force here locally with Prosecutor Dorsey and others on that. And that's something we look forward to advancing the ball down the court on. I don't know if there is, will be a silver bullet solution in the next session, but we need more funding and we need better rules so that we can obviously make sure we hold criminals accountable or suspects accountable. But not just public defenders and police, but that goes kind of for everything, right? Prosecutors also kind of more quietly, but also in a pinch, and, and our courts, you know, also in a pinch as well, bat blocks and everything else. So it's really the entire system. And we look forward to any input from Mason County or frankly, anywhere to try to help advance that ball down the court so that we can have a better public safety system. One thing I hear and continue to hear about a lot is kind of the squatting problem, property rights issues. Dan had a bill, I, I think we'll be introducing that again, to try to help solve what we view as a decades and decades and almost a history of Washington state-long inequity with people's property rights. Frankly put, we should not be allowing people who don't own the property to come on and basically steal your property. We have to do something about that. I know that there is a, there's limitations on what the Sheriff's Department can do or the county can do. And it's a kind of a lengthy and problematic court process, but the state law needs to change so that it's easier for y'all to do the job of protecting people's property rights. And that's something I think we hear about quite often. Also, another fantastic Griffey bill, even though we solved the fire district problem, kind of for now the bigger, the biggest problems. We still want to prevent that from happening again in the future. So I think we'll be running the bill about the malfeasance, misfeasance again, making sure there's some clarity onto who and how we can tackle those problems with small, special junior taxing districts, like fire districts. And of course, ongoing problems, you know, obviously, everyone's focused on housing. As someone who just had an 18-year-old that had to move to Kitsap County, I am very interested in finding ways that our kids can remain home if they want to remain here and stay here and live here and work here. Right now, it's very difficult. I know everyone feels that as well. But there's obviously a lot there. We're going to be looking at policy solutions that build capacity for housing, that, you know, reduce the cost. We need to have, the word escapes me. We need, we need to be building out the ability to create more housing and not making more rules around it that make it harder for investment. There's a word for that. It just escapes me. And then, of course, right now, everyone's feeling the pinch with the economy, not just the county, but all of our taxing districts. And of course, everybody at home is feeling the pinch with inflation. So of course, we're really interested in keeping taxes low. In the last couple of sessions, we've seen things like proposals for wealth taxes. We've seen things for rent control that would inevitably be a 7% increase in rents across the board. And then also, we've seen proposals to, you know, essentially lift the cap on property taxes to increase property taxes 3%. Now, some, some taxing districts that benefit from property taxes may support some of those proposals because they're feeling the pinch as well. But the majority, the vast majority of our people at home can never afford a 3% increase in property taxes. So Mason County's been really good, very fantastic about keeping property taxes low. And, you know, living within its means and fixing its fiscal house over the last decade. But we need to make sure we defend against tax increases and frankly, regulatory increases in, in other policy measures that increase the cost for people at home. And that's all I have.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll just, first off, appreciate you both being here today. It's great to see you. Busy summer, I'm sure. But just, I guess I wanted to just start with a word of thanks for all of your support over the past, well, Dan, several years, Travis, the past two. But I just think your work, especially on the freight corridor, has been so welcome to us. And I know that that's a priority for, for Drew as well. And just, we're, your leadership on that, to be able to continue to get that funded and moving forward is, it's a huge bonus for us here in the community to have advocates like you on that project. So I'm sure we'll have a lot more to talk about as we go forward today, but I, I think that's a really appropriate place to start for us is just grateful for your advocacy on, on that project in particular and everything else that you've been able to help us with over the past several years.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Yep. A lot of heavy lifting, but we're getting, we're, we're moving that ball down the court as well, starting to buy property. I think personally, I think once you start buying the land, there's no going back, so.
That's why I wanted to buy it now. Buy, buy, buy.
We've more than fully funded it. We maybe even overfunded it, just in case of cost variances. We've cleared a lot of the regulatory hurdles. There was a lot of work and a lot of back and forth and a lot of even talking with property owners and constituents that would be affected in the area. We've cleared a lot of those hurdles. And one of the good things I think about it is when they put up to bid the contract to start building the road. I think it's an attractive contract because you don't have to have a lot of the traffic mitigation and the flaggers and everything else because it's just new road. And so you might have a little bit of that on the connectors. But then, you know, Dan especially, we, we put in some extra work to make sure that we have future projects separate from the bypass project to make sure we have those two additional connectors in the future, and we funded them, well, beginning funding. And so those are new projects down the pike, but of course, there's a lot of other transportation level things that we're looking at. I would really like to see the, the turnoff on Highway 3 in Johns Prairie fixed. I think that's dangerous. I think I put my own life into my own hands when I turned on to Highway 3 from Johns Prairie. But of course, we've done some work on 101 as well to make sure there's jersey barriers. And it's one of the most dangerous stretches of highway in the state, and we're trying to make it at least a little bit safer. Of course, transportation projects take a long time, and it's very competitive with all the other projects going on across the state. So very proud that we kicked up the Belfer bypass to the top of the priority list and got it fully funded.
One of the major projects, thank you, Travis, appreciate it. Thank you, Kevin. But we are faced with about 40% overages on every state project when it comes to transportation. So any way we can really fine tune the projects we want to do, like Johns Prairie. I know Commissioner Netherlands and myself, we've been talking to DOT Olympic Region Director about oval roundabouts, about different ideas that are, that are easy, more easy to pull off. Because that is, it is a, it, it looks like it would be easy, but there's not a lot of land there, and our geography is not very good. There is, people from Public Works would, I think, would attest to. But we're having a hard time taking some of our, getting some of our major mega projects funded. And we're going to have a hard time next year. So finding transportation money is going to be tough. That doesn't mean we, if we, that's why we're trying to focus on specific things. Travis mentions Johns Prairie. That's one that I think is, is prime, that we could probably sell as a bypass to Shelton to give a more direct freight corridor that they would use. And that is, that scores very high in transportation projects. And it's a relatively low-cost project in comparison to the giant mega projects that we got. So it might be something that we can pull off. So the other thing, there, there was major regulatory hurdles to get to where we're at on the bypass. So yeah, there were a lot of people that were concerned that we didn't have the, the two extra connectors and that sort of thing. We were able to put them into a future project, which allowed us to use this current environmental impact study, which saved us $50 million and actually saved the project. If we didn't, if we held out for those, we would still be talking 15 years from now and we're, and not actually paving a road. So I, I made that decision on the fly with his, his help. We actually were just commuting. And DOT said, if you guys hold out for these intersections, you're going to delay the process by well over five years, which we didn't want to do. Anyway, I'll go ahead.
And just one final tack on to that, and I know we've talked about, you know, the strains with the economy right now. And I'm sure you guys know, but for anyone listening at home, the revenue forecasts for, you know, state revenues are not looking that rosy right now. And so we predict that there will be less capacity in the next budget cycle. And of course, you find that catch-22 when you're in tough economic times. People's needs are higher, right? Different organizations' needs are higher, agencies' needs are higher. They're going through, the state is going through a series of collective bargaining negotiations right now. So the needs are high, but the money, the revenue forecasts are going down. So it's really critical that we, you know, measure twice and cut once.
Mr. Travis?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you guys too, Travis. I know I've seen you all over the, the news for DCYF. And, and to protect our youth that are, that are in those facilities and to protect the youth that will be going into those facilities. So I would encourage, I know that there's talk about other facilities being built, and I'm really glad that King County didn't close theirs yet. So if I could encourage them to keep their doors open as well, that would be great.
I think they are. I've been having lots of conversations with at least the King County Prosecutor's Office on the SETFs and the sexually violent predator with community releases. I believe that going to the largest prosecuting office in the state and getting their buy-off is probably the best way to start. Sometimes I start here and then work my way up. What I'm trying to do is work there and make sure it's scalable so it works here. And then I think we'll have better results. But I think they're going to keep theirs open.
Yeah, and on the DCYF issue, you know, I'm glad that the, the court had the injunction, especially for the counties, to make sure that the counties didn't get the rug pulled from under them, which was kind of what was happening with Ross Hunter, the Secretary of DCYF. There's a, a lot of cleanup on all five in DCYF right now. And it spans more than juvenile justice, kind of as you mentioned, the avarice kids. There's a lot of fentanyl deaths in our state, severe increase, unacceptable increase in child fatalities right now. Of course, some of them happened in our community here in Shelton. We've seen that in the news in the last handful of months. Obviously, you know, these are a lot of times babies and toddlers. They need our protection, period. But on the juvenile justice front, there's a lot of talk about, you know, possibly opening up another facility or a previous facility like Nacelle. You know, however, it's kind of a double-edged sword because if you open up a new facility, you've got to be able to staff the new facility. And right now, one of their big problems is workforce. That collective bargaining negotiation I mentioned is for a lot of DCYF workers right now. You know, they're planning a walkout, so that if that tells you where they're at in negotiations. But, you know, to the extent that the legislature can, obviously, the legislature can direct DCYF to open up and staff and maybe even fund an additional facility somewhere to make sure that there's more capacity. But this is one of the pitfalls of JR to 25. You know, if we didn't have JR to 25, we would not have this capacity issue. And the state, especially state agencies and the legislature, need to do a better job of foresight with the policies that they pass. They can't live in a vacuum. We have to think about them long-term. But going forward, a couple of other interesting things I'm working on in juvenile justice, because that's one of the committees I'm the assistant ranking member of. We want to make sure that the juvenile block grants that counties receive, that you can use those block grant funds at their best and highest purposes. So right now, the state essentially says that you can use the block grant funds for, like, if you send a juvenile to diversion, there has to be evidence-based kind of programming. But then the state goes on to define what is evidence-based. And as we're finding out, things that we funded for 20 years are now not evidence-based anymore. And so we want more flexibility for counties and more flexibility for diversion programs to kind of almost a right to try. Let's try some of the things that we are maybe new and upcoming, that we think will work better than what we've tried for 20 years and are failing. Use, be able to kind of open up that definition of evidence-based so that there's more flexibility there for the use of those funds. And it's not a lot of funds, but when you can't spend them in the best possible way, they're even less, right? And so we want our diversion programs to work. And then we want to collect the data on the backend and get some performance data about how those things are working so that we don't do the mistakes for 10, 20 years, that we can quickly evolve and make sure that we're getting the best possible rehabilitation for not only the juvenile that's, you know, in the midst of the system, but also it will, does the best to reduce recidivism in our communities when we can effectively employ those programs. And to the extent that juveniles who are involved in the system from other counties may come to Mason County, we want to make sure that works across the state. And so there's kind of a three-bucket approach to juvenile justice in my mind right now. One is diversion programs, like we talked about, making sure that there's some accountability, that they actually work and that we're allowing them the flexibility. The capacity issues, the detention capacity, and then making sure when the juveniles are in detention, that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. If I told you that Green Hill School hasn't had a cafeteria for four years and that those kids stay in their cell for maybe 22 hours a day and then get fed a tray through the door, I don't think that's rehabilitative for, for a, a young adult or even a young kid. And so if we're investing a lot of money to do those things, we might as well be doing them right. And the, the third bucket is accountability. There are some crimes in our sentencing grid and in our system that the state is far too lenient on. I'll give one example. A juvenile should not get four chances to shoot up their neighborhood with possession of a stolen firearm before they are detained. That is too lenient in almost everybody's mind. And although simply detaining a juvenile doesn't change their behaviors necessarily, there could be a deterrent because a lot of adult criminals are using juveniles as middlemen to commit other crimes. That's one. To the extent that there's some deterrence added into the system there, that's something that's intriguing to me. But also, at some point, you have to separate dangers from society from the rest of us. If you're going about your neighborhood, shooting up the place for a maximum of four times before we can do something about it, that's not. times before we can do something about it, that's not community safety. And so expect a lot from me in the space next coming session.
Thank you.
So Travis, thank you again from my side as well. I was in the room when we were having the issue when it came to the roundabouts and stuff on top and you guys stood very tall, very hard at a point where there was some intimidation, everything, you didn't allow it, you stood up and I believe that's why it was able to continue. It could have went the other way very quickly. I was there. So thank you for that. Thank you also for all the support you've given us. This last year, we've met with our utilities and we're trying to explain to them how backwards we are and how bad it really is when we're having to raise their rate. But the truth is, we're covering it through so many other ways. Part of that is the monies that you've gotten us for different things such as, for designs such as the work that we're doing at Russell Wood. Without that, we can't carry all that. We would definitely have to make it even harder than it already is. And I don't want that to go unnoticed because that was a big thing for my community, our community. So thank you for that. Couple little just comments on some of the hard work that you're doing. When it comes to prosecution and defending, it's funny when they always say the state versus, and we at the county, we know the state versus doesn't mean anything. We have to pay to catch them, we have to pay to cook them, we have to pay to try them, we have to pay to prosecute, we have to pay to defend them. You know, what is it, eighty-seven percent was, a few years ago was the last number. And we have to cover all that, at least the majority of it. When you're looking and you're talking, if you could find ways for us to come together and have some of those costs covered, we might be able to be paying more than we're already doing in order to tie some. Another thing I want to bring up is when you're talking about bringing in new buildings and allowing for new construction, at the state level, anything you can come up with, what we're trying to do here at the county is to put our, any fees on occupancy. The difference is, is late money is cheaper. They can build the building and then when they sell it, recoup it as they're paying for the occupancy and those fees. So if you can keep that in mind, if you see any opportunity, be appreciated. As for the Johns Prairie and the priority, boy, do we ever agree with you. The young man who designed, that design that changes, because for years, we were told it couldn't be done. And then we brought this young kid up there, they let me have him and he went up there and he says, oh, we can do it this way, we can do it that. And then they closed him down quickly afterwards because it was outside the box thinking, that's what he's talking about, this oval round. He's still with you, just so you know. He was in charge of welfare bypass. Now he's doing, I think, the granting. Great, great young man. So hopefully we pull that together. And if we do, that, I'm not speaking for the commission, this is just something that we're just talking, we've talked about before a little bit. We put money away for certain projects and if something becomes a priority, maybe that little bit is what helps you to make your decision, get your decision made. You know, five hundred thousand or more to get that Johns Prairie, it might be a great investment for the county to partner with you guys if you're able to pull that off. And again, I'm just speaking for myself, but it's not something that we haven't discussed. So it's not an official thing I'm putting out there. Also, when your conversation on youth and whether to detain them or not, if they are detained, it may not be the end all to anything, but they're not shooting anybody while they are. So I'm with you. You get them detained and we'll deal with the rest later because it's a lot harder for them to hurt somebody else when they're incarcerated in any way. So again, thank you for being here today and for all the hard work you're doing.
Well, I mean, just to, everything you brought up has been something I've worked on. I think as a result, we did the math and I think we would have increased the state if Travis's bill would have passed. Your prosecutors and the sheriff's deputies would have benefited probably thirty percent, right? So we're going to keep that conversation going, I assure you. His bill might not be the vehicle, the way we wanted to do it, maybe we're going to go more comprehensive. But the one thing that we have, since we've been talking in this defender space, we're not making enough attorneys. And we are going to have to do something monumental to make more attorneys. And those attorneys that were, that are coming, you know, that are starting to go out into the workforce, they don't work, I mean, it isn't even the money to them near as much as the working conditions that they have. And we found out with the defenders, they want their, you know, their work product to be reduced by forty or fifty percent, right? I mean, it's, we're going to have to really whittle our pencils sharp on that and come up with, how do we fix the supply problem? How do we fix the costs? Because your costs are going up, you know, all of those things. When it comes to waiting for the impact fees and those sort of things on occupancy, that, I've been championing that for a long time. However, a lot of issues is, or come to the top then. If we do all the impact fees right at the beginning, at the end, which is I think easier for the contractor to do, did we actually mitigate the traffic impacts of said development? Those things could take five or 10 years in planning to get off the ground. And so do we want five or 10 years of that traffic impact non mitigated while we're still doing it? So, and then the costs for our transportation projects ever increase. So I agree it should be at closing, but is there a way we can bond, do anticipation bonds knowing that so we can do code development? So I'm looking into that. And I think there is an ability for us to do anticipation bonds, but we're going to have to, there's going to have to be a tweak to the law to allow for anticipation of diverted money or impact monies.
Cities currently do. They use them, right here in Shelton, they go through the sidewalks and stuff, so.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's along the lines of where we're going to go. And I think that'll take the majority, my majority party colleagues who always pushed against it, because they want to see the mitigation happen instead of having to then go to the transportation budget to actually mitigate something that should have been mitigated by the developer. I want to see that as well. I want it to be a collaborative process. We are happy to hear that our efforts in the capital budget are helping keep the rates low. We told you that last year, that is very important to us. And so that, I guarantee you, I'm not speaking for him up to turn because he's told me point blank, that's important to him as well. So thank you for all that.
Yeah, and I just want to point out like how appreciative I am, I mean, this whole group. You come to Olympia during the session, I see Sharon Trask a lot. When I was in appropriations and we were trying to breathe life into a Nikki Torres bill, I was getting direct calls from Kevin, you know, to try to help. And we were able to revive us like the last bill or something, or second to last. I mean, we barely revived it, but, I mean, it's a small thing for public defense, but, you know, sometimes you've got to just take what progress you can get at the time. And so I just really appreciate some of the real time communication on some of the policies that are happening. When you got over a thousand bills, it's hard to keep them all up here in the trap, right?
Right.
One other thing I wanted to bring up, real big problem in our community and that is childcare. We are in an extreme childcare desert. There is a lot of problems and other DCYF issue as well. I had a bill last year that was supported by Association of Counties that would give local licensing options to counties. You would be able to, under a set of ground rules, build some of your own ordinances that match your communities, that's more responsive to the locals here. And basically how it would work is you would, if you're in a childcare desert, which I defined as a hundred thousand population and below, which matches Mason County, you would be able to have a choice. You could remain with DCYF childcare licensing policy or you can create a local ordinance level policy around childcare with a groundwork level of rules, a lot of them surrounding federal law, such as safety and security and whatever. But I did so and even though if you decided to create your own local licensing options for childcare that's more responsive to your community, you wouldn't be locked out of subsidies. You would, in my bill, you would still be allowed to enter into early achievers, but you would not be forced to go up to higher levels of early achievers. And the ground floor level doesn't cost anything. So if you want, if a childcare provider wanted to, they could go up, but they're not being forced to. Of course, counties could kind of tailor that in a certain way. But once you're in early achievers, you get working connections childcare money subsidies. So one of the big problems I have in Olympia is they continue to pass childcare subsidies, which might seem good, especially given that strained market. But the problem is, is that if you do not have childcare in your district, then those subsidies aren't helping to build us more childcare in our district, more capacity. They're only helping to subsidize existing childcare in non childcare deserts like King County and Pierce. And what I don't want is our constituents to have to pay to not have childcare, pay more to not have childcare in their area, but instead help boost the childcare in areas they do not live. And they have recognized this and they said, please representative, pinky swear, we will build some more capacity in your district. We have zero early E cap. We have very few slots for E cap and Head Start. And that's one big reason I protected our transitional kindergarten programs in our K-12 schools. Because if you get rid of TK programs in schools and you don't have childcare and you don't have early learning slots, then what do you have? You have no recourse and no options. And so at the same time, we were, you know, we were, I was like really agile, so we were able to serve our Hispanic kids, our non English learners in early learning. We got proviso money in the operating budget to help out like Great Bend Music Center for their early learning program. We got a growing Hispanic community and those kids deserve to be served as well. And the real bang for your buck, when you get into K-12, when English isn't your first language, the scores plummet in the K-12 system. So those are learners that have the hardest time. And oftentimes, they speak better English than their parents. But early learning, the ages between zero and five is when the brain is a sponge and you're learning a lot. So we get a lot of bang for our buck in early learning. That pays dividends later in the K-12 system with our Hispanic communities.
So Mark?
If I may.
Go ahead.
So I'm the chair of our daycare, our largest daycare here in Mason County, Shelton. And one of the things that we're finding out is there are so many regulations as far as, as what the educational requirements, you have to have a degree, not in just education, but you have to have a degree in early childhood education.
Yep.
Not as many of those. And then, so that drives up the cost.
Yep.
Okay? And if you do try to pay at the levels that would really enhance that, bring those people in. Well, then we bump up against DSH and saying, well, once you hit this certain level, now you, as a teacher who may have kids in daycare, and most of them do, your subsidy is cut off. So now I have to give you a thirty thousand dollar increase in your salary to break even with what you would have lost. It costs around, for first one, three kids in daycare, you're talking thirty-three to thirty-six thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, childcare is a total crisis and we need to start treating it like the small businesses that they are. You can only subsidize something until one day it becomes fully subsidized government run childcare. And the socialization of something like that is something that I don't think works for our community and it's philosophically something I don't agree with.
So what I'm saying is, if there is a way to crack that nut, I've got room for kids. I've got lots of room. I don't have a workforce.
Right. Yeah.
And when you're, you're going, you can serve so many kids per teacher and you only have a handful of teachers, I don't care how big your building is.
Yeah.
You can't serve the kids. I can serve a hundred fifty kids, but right now I can't.
My idea has always been, since I was on the early learning committee, is scaling what childcare looks like. From safety and security, make sure they're going to be fed, they're going to be cared for and nurtured. Another level would be, you know, a different educational standard that's moving up a ladder and then full certification to the DCYF level. We've got to have a lot more availability in childcare. And the only way we're going to get that is we're going to have to change some of the certification requirements. And then give all of those people that are working in the early childhood, delivery of those services, give them bridges to where they can get to the next certification level. And I think it needs to be certification. This requiring a degree is crazy. I mean, I did many things that some people would wonder in emergency medical with certifications. But the great targeted classes will get great performance in the end. And I think requiring the degree is where the DCYF went wrong, very wrong.
It's trapping people in poverty.
It is.
Everything you've mentioned is something either I personally or another member of my caucus has written a bill to try to solve or fix. But unfortunately, right now, there is this wide chasm in childcare policy over what the end game should be, right? And.
But you'll be seeing me this.
And what we're, what I'm working on right now is to try to, kind of off to the side, have those critical discussions with the other side to find out what the grand bargain is. Can we get a little bit of what we need and you get a little bit of what you want as well, so we can start moving the ball in the right direction? Because right now, I mean, like some things in Olympia, the chasm of belief on what childcare should be at the end of the day is a very big gap, right? I mentioned small businesses, right? It is a small business to you, one that's heavily, heavily regulated and makes it impossible for you to basically operate at your fullest capacity and your best possible use, right? The other kind of, you know, ideology is that, you know, they should basically kind of become like K-12 schools. They should be fully government run and subsidized and, but that's basically where we've been heading the last decade and it doesn't seem to be obviously getting any better. We're in crisis mode. It's not serving anybody and at some point, you've got to pay the bills. And how do you pay for all that? We can barely pay for it right now. And so we need to, we need to be a lot smarter about it, but it's going to take some really critical discussions. And one of the reasons I bring that up is because you're the, as a county, you're the, you know, kind of the middleman customer of childcare, right? Like you're in between the state policy and also your constituents on, you know, with not a whole lot of authority. I'm trying to give you more authority to build your own future if you so choose. But at the end of the day, it's a huge problem for constituents and it hurts them economically, it hurts us economically, right, as government as well, when people can't go back to work.
It shrinks the workforce bad.
And so there's.
It hurts our workforce.
Yeah, absolutely. And so a lot to be done there. We keep pushing, but one of the things I would ask in return is to take a good look at these bills as they arrive and weigh in on them, one way or another. Tell us if my bill is not working for a certain reason or it could be changed. If you like it, come, I need your help to come testify on it. I think it's one thing to have a lobbyist from Association of Counties come and testify, but it's more powerful to the committee when individual county commissioners or moms or whoever, daycare providers come testify on those things. And frankly, you're drowning in regulations, so you don't have a lot of time to come to Olympia to testify, but it's easier than ever before because you can do it on Zoom. And so we need those stories, we need those voices, and we're just not getting them in that committee.
Thank you. End us up on the vulnerable adult definition.
Yeah, so we put together some issues, absolutely want to echo our commissioners' thanks to you for supporting Mason County and what you've, the resources that you've provided us to do the work that we need to do has been essential. I mean, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish as much as we have without those. So thank you very much for those. One of the issues that we've identified as we're working with our nonprofit communities around the county is that the definition of vulnerable adult is so restrictive that individuals that are vulnerable don't have access to some of the resources that they need because they don't meet the specific criteria as defined in RCW for vulnerable adult. And I'm going to let Dave Windham talk about some details on that associated with, Dave is our public health and community services director.
I grow lots of hats. So through our work with homeless and, and not just homeless, substance abuse, mental health, the trifecta of those things. Many of those things we can't address with an adult until they're over age sixty. So, you know, autism, whatever is causing the problems, doesn't get addressed between age twenty-five and age sixty. They're just left to fend for themselves. And if they only have social security disability, now they have at max twelve hundred dollars of resources a month. And that's just not getting that anywhere. So we really need to, to look at how that's defined and see if we can start pulling in some of these people that we can help with the resources we have. We have, in many cases, we have a resource, but they can't access it. So, just because-
Do you have sample idea language?
Yeah, I'm working on it now.
I'd be happy to change it. We've been, we've been working on the vulnerable adult. And I told you in the past, like, I, I want us to change it for how do we directly engage with somebody who is dying on the street as well? Like, that's really why we need to get there and I want to give you that help, so.
Yeah, I'm working on some language and working with our nonprofits. So, once I get it written, I want to get it to you guys this fall, early this fall.
Please.
So you can get it into the process.
We can get sales draft ideas and we'll work it out.
When it came up, the obvious pitfall was pretty quick and simple. Everybody's definition started shifting before long it was everybody was vulnerable.
Yeah.
And when that happens, you're never going to get anywhere, so hopefully we can help.
We need, we need to narrow it down.
Yeah.
It has to be very narrow. We have to recognize that people have, you know, civil rights in the United States. But again, the majority hides behind civil rights to do nothing. And so, I think we can come up with a middle ground that will allow the counties to deploy resources to help more people.
So if individuals want, they may, they may want and be trying to acquire the services that they need, but if they don't meet that definition, then they can't. It's not like we're forcing them to do it.
Well, I'm trying to force them to. Like, I want, I want you to have a criteria tool. Like, I'm trying to define failure to thrive. What is, to me, I know what failure to thrive is, but I want it to be a universal definition to where they meet criteria, failure to thrive, we're going to civilly commit, right? We need to deploy resources, put them in a program, get them better, and then get them back to community and, and, and ready to go, right? That's what my goal would be.
Okay. Dave, do you also want to talk about the licensing of the SUD treatment camps?
Yes, so, this, this popped up last year, about this time. We had treatment camps for youth. And in many cases, they charge as much as $30,000 for a kid to come into the program. But there's no oversight, you know? Now, I can oversee the kitchens and the septic systems and, you know, community development can do the billing permits. But the actual programs don't answer to anybody. I mean, DCYF, DSHS, they're not licensed by anybody. And anyone can put in one of these, these centers for troubled youth and they don't answer to anybody. And that's, you know, especially, some of them are providing medical care with no oversight. So, this is something we really need to look at. And ours, the, the one we had here that I was bumping into, they had no licensed kitchen, no licensed well, no building permits. I mean, they had the whole, the whole broad spectrum of things. Eventually, they shut down because they just-
Do we have one of these camps here?
Yeah, we, we did. But it, but as I talk with my peers around the state, it's, it's something everywhere. You know, in Montana, I worked with, with an agency called Wilderness Treatment Center, and it was very well done, again, very expensive. An immersive six-month program, but they had physicians, they had a number of things that were, were there as safeguards to make sure that those kids were safe while they were going through the program. And in Washington, we just don't have that.
Is, does it include school?
Well, there's an education component to it, but that's, that's a smaller piece of it than-
Let's get together off to the side and then brainstorm some-
Okay.
-solutions. That would be, I think, in my wheelhouse.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it just, it cropped up this last year and I was stunned to find out that they don't answer to anybody. They fly under the radar on everything, so.
Okay. So, so the next opportunity on our list here is, these things don't come up very often, right? So, on Mason Lake, there is a large privately-owned campground.
Yeah.
And it's currently owned by Green Diamond. Green Diamond does not want to own a campground anymore. And so, they had approached the State Parks Department, I believe, last year or the year before, in, in trying to get them to gauge their interest in it. Believe from the conversations that we've had with Green Diamond Administration that they expressed interest in it, but really didn't have, it was, it was, it was too small for them to, to really go in and adopt. So, Green Diamond then turned to the county and said, hey, what do you guys think? So, when you look at the amazing natural resources that we have around our county and the areas where you can have public access to those resources, I believe that, and I'm kind of speaking for the commissioners, but they can definitely put in their own words here, it really popped up as an opportunity to, to acquire and, and open a pretty amazing campground on Mason Lake that could, that could really, open it up to a larger, larger population of folks to come and, and visit it. And then, it could be actually run as one of our county parks. So, we are in the process and have been given permission to actually go out and start to do some assessments of what the value of that is. Not only from infrastructure, where's the infrastructure at, but also looking at the financial side of it and saying, how much are they currently getting in fees? So that we could actually collect enough in fees to actually support the staff that would be, be needed to operate it. But there is, there's a pretty big hurdle of, of actually acquiring it. I know that, that Green Diamond has talked to other legislators about this. I'm not sure if they've actually spoke with you directly, but definitely interested in your guys' view on, what does that look like moving forward for Mason County? And is it something that, that we could look to the state for some support in acquiring property?
It's going to come all out of the same budget. I mean, the bucket, like, the, the things that you're going to ask for as far as rate relief and all that kind of stuff, we have one place to get it unless we talk State Parks into partnering or something.
We did talk to Green Diamond about it last year and we had them go, you know, work with State Parks, right? And then also to see if there's, there are State Parks buckets of money in the capital budget, but we're talking different scales, right? And that's like a, kind of like PSAR list or anything else. It's like you put yourself on, if you can get on the list, you get on the list, but you're down the list quite a ways. But, I mean, that's a different scheme than Mason County owning it. And so, I personally want to make sure we have that asset available to our community like it has been. I have an idea of what the, what, well, at least what Green Diamond thinks it's worth, right? And so, I guess you'll have to do your due diligence to find out what it's really worth and see if that kind of matches up. But at the end of the day, if the ask is for me and Dan and Drew to come in to kind of defray some of those costs, like, I'm going to throw out a random number that may or may not be true, but if it's $10 million and, you know, Dan, the 35th District only has so much capacity to help defray the cost. I mean, maybe a million, maybe two million, you know? And of course, a downturn in revenue and a, maybe a capital budget that has less capacity, unfortunately, potentially, right? So we'll see. But I'm not opposed to trying to work together to find a solution that keeps that asset in our community. And I'm actually, as a constituent, happy that Mason County is looking into it, so.
It, it would be nice. I just, I just want to make it clear, like, we have one bucket of money to do capital purchases. We're not going to be able to take it from general fund and that sort of thing. So, if, if we, if we, we're going to have to go all in if we're going to do it. And so, that means other things that may be on the list and they've been carryover for the other years.
Sure.
They might have to change priority.
Yeah, I mean, if, if our community project's budget is, you know, $3 million and you've asked us for, you know, other things aside from that, I mean, put it in your priority list where it ranks, right, amongst your, and, and also knowing that our infrastructure and economic development is, is our priorities, right? Building new water pipes and matlock is more important than, you know, buying a new park that we have to figure out how to maintain, so.
But it would, it's amazing for the community to have that and have it fully open so the whole Mason County community can use it, that, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say, I, I do think it's a unique opportunity for us to consider that. We have, at least not in my tenure on the commission, really expanded our parks portfolio, at least not to this, to this extent. Certainly, there would be not, there wouldn't be a whole lot of reinventing the will there. They have a business model, you know, that, that they have been able to maintain and operate that park for, for quite a while. So, where it ranks in terms of priorities for the county, I would say, based on the unique nature of the opportunity, it would, in my opinion, be a pretty high priority for the county. How that fits in with other requests that you get from other organizations in the county, that's, that's frankly, your problem, not mine. I mean, well, you know what I mean, that you've got, you kind of have to sift through those and you know what the lay of the land is going to look like for you in session. And so, just like you do with the bypass, you're in the room, you make those calls, right? But I think for our, for our, for our perspective, I mean, having the opportunity to, to put, keep that in the, in the public sphere and accessible to the public is, is, is pretty important to us. And, you know, the reality is, if it, if they don't want to maintain it the way they do and State Parks continues to, to refuse to take that project on, the likelihood that that becomes housing and inaccessible to the public is, is a, is a high probability.
And that would be a true loss.
Correct, yeah. And so, I mean, those are the things, I mean, those are the things that factor into our decision-making.
But, I mean, also, you know, purchasing the property is not something, it's, it's not like we can phase that in.
Correct.
Right? I mean, it's a, I mean, I mean, I don't know, there'd be a down payment or if you finance it or something, but at the end of the day, you're, you're, you're just purchasing the property.
Yeah.
Right? And then, of course, you set up your own business model to maintain, right? Throw it under your portfolio and parks.
And through REIT, and through REIT, we have some capacity to, to make improvements and, you know, we, you know, I think probably as a county or at the point where we need to maybe look at the Metropolitan Parks District again to help, you know, support some of these things so that we don't have to keep coming back to you for projects like that or we don't burden, overburden our REIT, you know, in the same way. So, I think it takes a comprehensive look at kind of how this would fit into the county's operations to, to make that kind of a decision. But you, you know how it goes, sometimes with these things, you don't always get the perfect timing and the ability to, you know, plan for an acquisition of this, this scale. And so, we're, we're kind of trying to play a little bit of catch-up. And that's what Mark was saying about, we're doing some feasibility work now and trying to figure that out. So, you know, it's likely that we might come to you in the next couple of months with an ask that is significant and outside of the, you know, realm of probably reality for you in session, but just kind of recognizing that, you know, those are the things that we probably have to do in order to kind of keep that conversation going and looking for other partnership opportunities and things like that.
So, and you maybe, maybe don't know yet, are you going down the path of potentially like just financing this or, like in terms of how, how you, I know you're doing feasibility stuff, but like, what, what direction are you heading in? You know, are, is this a project, maybe you're leaning towards a finance kind of option where you finance it and pay it down? Or, or is this, we're just going to pay for it outright and drop a bucket of cash, you know?
I think that, I think that there may be some flexibility there with Green Diamond. Green Diamond, I think, also shares in the wish that it could be open and accessible to the public, and so they're willing to work with us on that and hopeful of that. I don't know if there's a drop dead date associated with when ownership says, hey, either, you know, take this action or don't, but by this certain time, we're going to, we're going to either take this other road and potentially go out and sell it to, to the general public. But hopefully, there's some opportunities there. We do have a new grant writer that's coming on here at the end of September. Definitely tasked them with going and doing some research on what other opportunities are out there, maybe with the federal levels, to protect some of these lands, right? It's, it's not often that you get the opportunity to acquire and protect areas of, areas of waterfront like this that are truly not, not as accessible as, as others, right? We do have a, we do have a Mason County Park that's a, really a boat launch on the other opposite side of the lake now, that gives individuals access to the lake by boat, but then once they get on the lake, they couldn't, you know, if that, if that wasn't available, then they would not be able to, to, to enjoy anything off the water. So, hopeful that we can find that. Definitely interested in looking down all the different roads that are there. I think as Commissioner Shutey said, it's, it's something that it's difficult to find a, a good time to ask for it or a good place to ask, but to not do anything and not do the research or the due diligence that we need to do now, feels like that would be too big of a loss to, to not do anything. So, definitely looking for opportunities and for you guys to keep your eyes and ears open. And I know that they've talked to other legislators that are out there that, that have expressed some interest in it, so.
So Dan Travis, I see it a little different, how the opportunities and possibilities, something like what we just talked about. Now, I don't expect that you would move everything over to do this because there's too many others that are, are needy. What I think it would probably be a more likely opportunity is you have a few other legislators that see it as a big giant project that they're willing to jump on and maybe give some great support through RCO grants or some other granting opportunities to eat up part of it. And I do know that Green Diamond is interested or will discuss phasing, as you use the word. I know they will because they said that it's not off the table without a doubt. So there are different opportunities. As, as you heard Commissioner Shutey mention, we also have monies that are available in REIT that might meet up for some matching money. So it might be a combination of all of it at once, but what it would take is us to let you know that this is a possibility, we are looking at it, and all of a sudden you get a phone call that there's something in front of us that combined, if you put your power behind it, we might be able to make something happen. And I think that's what the goal is, at least for myself.
I just want to make the expectations clear. Like, it might cut into another project that you might want, so you guys are going to have to tell us the priority and, and where it ranks in the priority list. And, and Kevin, you're absolutely right, in the room, we might have to make calls that, you know, balls and strikes, but we need to know where it rates. And I want, and we talked about this last year, there are so many entities in Mason County are looking into the capital budget for help and resources, and I do believe that it benefits most of, all of Mason County. I just wanted that to be clear.
And I'm good with that because I just know myself, I believe that, I wish that number was a real one, but I don't, I think it's going to be much higher when it comes time, much higher. So I don't know how we can pull it off without it being something basically set aside separate and done in a separate dat, action with teaming up with others. I don't know how you can pull it off because, you know, we're all limited in what we can do and what we have available to us. So, I appreciate that you even considered it for us though, to be there when we-
Oh, it'd be exciting. I'd love to, I'd love to have it more accessible.
We've been keeping our ear to the ground. We've talked to Green Diamond about it early on. We've just, you know, been seeing how things play out and trying some other options. But absolutely, I think we both have the same heart as you that we want to keep that asset in our community. And we will be open to hearing any potential solutions and ways we can help, you know, to make that happen.
Yeah, so I realize that you guys are definitely limited on your local access funds and what you have control over and what's actually allotted to Mason County. So I'm, I'm thinking that beyond that, right? So other, other potential opportunities that might exist out there. And definitely Mason County is going to do our share of the work in, in terms of determining what the, what those, those true costs are, right? What are we looking for? And looking for other opportunities that may be outside of the state government, maybe at the federal level, but really looking around for, for other, other opportunities to find funds to help us get it done, so.
And we can help sign letters to-
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That's very supportive, yeah.
All right, so what else you got?
Transportation priorities, which you guys touched on, some of our main transportation priorities. I think first and foremost, keeping that Balfour Bypass going is, is important to us in our community. Loretta has probably some more policy-related asks.
Just reinforcing what Association of Counties and the County Road Administration Board put together last year in terms of transportation, focus on preservation. And I know that it's hard to look around Mason County roads and go, what? These are beautiful roads. I, I was just at a meeting this morning and folks were very complimentary in saying how the roads are hands down better than surrounding communities. But something that causes concern for us is taking a look at over 3,300 culverts, some of them we don't even have inventoried at this point, that are out there. We were just up at Tunaville, we just replaced one that had corroded and we had to shut down a lane, you may have been familiar with that, replace that. and we had to shut down a lane, you may have been familiar with that, replace that thing. And now there are fish barrier projects, right? To the tune of a half million.
A lot of them happening in that.
Minimum.
Belfair, right, during the bypass timeframe as well.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So it's, and these projects are often ineligible to receive the normal grant funding because they're on local, what's a, a local road, smaller route, lower volume. So that's 100% out of our road fund, our property taxes. So that is a challenge. We're, we're growing this bigger and bigger deficit looking ahead. In addition to that, now our bridge inventory was about 67, I think, here, maybe four or five years ago. And as a result of this, now we're up to 90 some bridges. Because, that are all now inspected, reported, on and on. So it's a, it's another ongoing cost on the other hand as well. So just kind of looking at, again, continued opportunities for additional revenues and resources. I know there's been great support on Fish Barrier Removal Board and bringing funds, other funds for the, the fish barrier projects. But yeah, it's, it's just a big growing liability, quite frankly.
Well, I need to say thank you. Your, the, our roads are amazing in Mason County. And I think it is large part due to what you're doing. But the fact that the county owns and operates a paving machine, that is quite an asset. And I've been, I've been trying to talk to my other county, the counties that I represent, they start doing that. Kitsap County has some, but probably they don't pave as much, as many lanes and as many road miles as you guys do in, in a calendar year. So, I mean, that taken outside the box is really helping. And the Mason County residents are definitely benefiting from it.
Yeah, I, I have to, I mean, hats off to our county engineer and our operations manager and our crews. They're just loving it. I mean, in terms of just doing the work and it's, you can see firsthand and when the community, like you and others, come up and are so grateful and such good feedback. Heard that again this morning, just like, we love the paved shoulders. We love simple things like low cost improvements.
I'm trying to talk to my colleagues who can walk on paved shoulders because they say we don't have walkable streets. Well, if the shoulders were foot wide, they're past the, the fog line, how's that different than concrete? I don't understand, but.
Right, it works.
Yeah, it does.
And it actually preserves the road too.
And it does preserve the road, yes. It makes the road easier to maintain.
So, just a question, I don't know if you know, but you know, as we go forward and more EVs get on the road, they're heavier, are you guys factoring in more costs for maintenance and preservation as a result of those extremely heavy vehicles tearing up our roads?
So that, our design standards will follow with that, right? Either greater depths in asphalt or our base courses, but yes, that'll be part of it. Either you're going to have a reduced lifespan and have to resurface sooner or increase your design standards or change what your construction standards are.
Post 2035, like these costs are.
That is not built in for future costs, no. But yeah, absolutely, that's a, that's a concern. That and the fact that the whole business about where's your revenue, right? If it's a gas tax and not as much fuel is being purchased, then that hits the pocketbook. And I know that.
We won't over.
I know, I know you've been, I know you've been wrangling that for more than one session already. So, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Glad, like Mark said, glad to hear that SR3 in John's Prairie is a priority. That's something we always hear from community members. Absolutely grateful to hear about the 101 barriers in the, the budget and that's fantastic. That's also a, a big concern and obviously the freight corridor.
Well, and I did, you know, stint on capital budget and, and I'm the assistant ranking member of appropriations of the operating budget, but you know, Dan and Drew, you know, put in a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of experience into the transportation side of things. And I get to just sometimes benefit from that. Like I'll partner up on our local projects like the bypass stuff and, but they do the bulk of the heavy lifting in, in committee and I do the heavy lifting in the other committees. But, you know, I just want to say like, they, they do the heavy lifting, they do a really good job. And it's really nice because not every delegation kind of gets along or agrees. But we all have different styles that complement each other and we all agree on the most important things and we go to bat for our counties. And whether it be SVPs or Belfair bypass or whatever it may be. And, you know, we had over $100 million in capital budget last biennium. And some communities, some recurring just happening in the district. And a lot of proviso money, operating budget money, I don't think we really got the pass before. Things like I mentioned with Great Bend Music Center. But, you know, for us, I don't know if people under, you guys for sure understand, but for those watching at home, like how difficult the, and competitive the transportation project process is. I mean, half the time Dan's coming out like pulling his hair out, but he always figures it out. At the end of the day, if he's got to make 50 calls to get everyone to agree. And so, it's a lot of work. I don't know if it's always, like, I know you guys appreciate it, but I don't know if anyone else appreciates how, how much work that is. But that's how we divide and conquer, you know, especially in the House. He does transpo and I do the other things. And together we do capital budget and then Drew as well.
We purposely pick other, you know, committees, so the 35th is well represented on most committees. So we'll have say on like 80% of the committee work. And then we get to go to the floor, having a very thorough knowledge of what's coming down the pipe. So I can brief him and Drew on what's coming down and what's going to really negatively affect where we live. And that's first for us, where we live and the people we represent. And then the state of Washington as a whole is the order that I, that we have taken on.
And I will say that even though we're in the minority party, you can go on the LEAK website and see, we are one of the most successful districts for capital budget money reinvested into our districts. Much more so than, you know, some of the majority party districts who get far less than we do. Very successful on the floor with amendments. I think in my fresh, my first year, I went seven for eight on floor amendments, which is kind of unprecedented. We get floor amendments, we get strikers, we work across the aisle to get, we do a lot of extra hard work because we're in the minority to do those things. But, you know, there's this kind of pervasive thought that because we're in the minority, we get less than if we had been in the majority. But that's truly by the data not true. We are outperforming our majority part, party colleagues a lot of the time. And I think just this last session, I went five for five on operating budget provisos. I introduced five, I got five. And there was many members of the majority party who didn't get one. And so, it's just putting in the work, putting in the hard work, making your case, you know, collaborating with everybody in your community, whether they be constituents or local government. And so, I know that, I've, I've heard that before, like, well, you're not in the majority, so you don't get as much. That's not true. That's not, factually not true. And you can actually go on the government website and look it up. And so, we're really proud of the work. And, and of course, you know, Mason County, we're the only representatives that, and Drew, that you have on like Thurston or Kitsap. So we put a little bit of extra love and attention into Mason County to make sure that it gets what it needs. And I think we're just going to continue that in the next two years.
Before we go on to the next one, we need to thank Travis, thank you for all your work on the next we're going to speak about. That is directly because of some of the work you put in.
Yeah, so the, so the jail study. You guys got us some money that we could go out and kind of look at our community, look at what the needs were in the jail, look at what are the, the community impacts that actually directly affect incarceration and what do we have and what do we don't have, right? So we got a team together that involved individuals from our corrections, sheriff's office, our public health department, OHRS, the, the, the ASO group. And we, and we also included the city in there too. And so, we came together as a group, talked about what currently we have in place with the consultants. The team worked really well with us and I have a very draft report that I could share with you. It is, I've provided it electronically to the commissioners because with all the, the, the details and the backup documentation, it's like 1,200 pages. But I could actually provide you with a, with an executive summary.
Oh, thank you.
That is much easier to read. And I, I think what we came down to is that when we're looking at the individuals that are in our jail right now, they're very different than they were in the past, right? Many of them are, are suffering from mental health issues and, and SUD issues. And the way that the jail was constructed back in the 1980s, you know, it was, you incarcerated folks, you put them into a cell and, and, you know, you provided them with their essential needs. But there really wasn't a lot of programming space put in there. There really wasn't a lot of thought to, to specific care that individuals in those groups might need. And then looking at it from a perspective of the DCR teams that are out there working in the community with our law enforcement folks and how do we actually prevent individuals from getting into incarceration from the start? Identified a need for Crisis Stabilization Unit. We, oftentimes, our law enforcement folks are going out there and, and interacting with individuals that are suffering from these mental health and SUD challenges. They may not have committed a, a, a serious enough offense to be arrested and incarcerated, but they, but they are looking for help, but there's no help there, right? So we don't have resources available for that. And then when you look at the staffing needs associated with providing those services, super hard to find, fairly expensive. And we said, how do, how do we share some of these things, right? So how could I have individuals with this specific set of skills necessary, treat individuals within our jail as well as within the outside community for individuals that aren't incarcerated? And so, they came up with an idea, a number of different options. The board will be briefed on the details of that here in the next couple of weeks. But in general, they came, they looked at, okay, do, what, what does it look like if we had to go out and build a brand new facility somewhere else? Well, some of the challenges with that is then, now you have an existing jail facility that gets empty and what do you do with the existing jail facility? You guys talked about it earlier in your, in your conversation about, when we talk about law and justice, we're not just talking about the sheriff's office and our corrections unit. We're talking about our prosecutors, we're talking about our indigent defense folks, our whole court system, both in district and Superior Court, as well as the, the ancillary resources that are out there to provide these individuals with some of the help that they need. And so, we looked at it, we looked at our current structure. We evaluated whether we could add on to the existing jail. So that, and, and if we added on to the jail, could we add on to the jail while it was still operational? So we don't have to close it down and actually add on to it. So they came up with some options there to add on to the existing jail, providing specific resources for individuals that are suffering from mental health and SUD. So programming space, what else would you call that? Probably.
Well, yeah, treatment space and.
I'm thinking about the health side of it, like the, it's almost like a medical.
Right, so they're, so triage, so someone comes in and they're evaluated and one of three paths, SUD, mental health, or directly into incarceration. And maybe, maybe a combination of some things. But the space available to do that. And to set somebody aside for 24 to 72 hours so they can detox, so you can actually make that.
Yes.
That determination.
If you do, in the plans, if you do do an add-on, does that give you the ability to have leftover funds to give the existing part of the facility a little bit of a facelift? You know, or some improvements?
Yeah, it does, it does, it does require us to actually modify the existing jail a little bit. I mean, you could, you could, we also want it to be reasonable in how we approach that. So what are the, where, where, what's the priority in which we'd want to spend these funds? And it's actually providing the space to actually address the individuals that are incarcerated first and foremost. And then there are some, some additional improvements that we could make to the jail to, to just improve the flow of it all and how it all works. And obviously, we're challenged with, with finding individuals to come work in our correctional facility. That's something that we appreciate your guys' help on. Anything you can do to help us out there, we'll definitely take it. But I think that, that coming into a facility that actually has some of these resources makes it a better working environment for those correctional officers that work there. Because we can actually put individuals in specific areas that, that meet their immediate needs. And it provides them with the resources that they need to, like Dave said, transition into maybe a general population within a couple of days and that exists within those populations too.
Or transition out to a long-term treatment facility because they meet criteria. That's kind of what the flow path we thought was going to look like.
Yeah, and even having some of those resources external, right? So if, if, if we had individuals that were ready and willing to, to move into that treatment, we have treatment facilities and, and resources existing in Mason County now. What we don't have is that, is that stabilization that gets individuals from, to a point where they actually could receive the treatment.
Too often they're dropped off at the hospital, for the hospital to deal with. And of course, the hospital's not, you know, in a place where they can do that. And many times they're, they're already full, so they get shipped over to St. Peter's or some other place, which takes, you know, two officers out of the system, you know, while that whole process is, is being handled. So this gets them back to a central location where it's, it's easily controlled.
And even then, they don't take them, even after you get to all those stages, they're still been told no.
Oh, I, yeah, I did that with.
You know firsthand.
Oh, all the time. It is frustrating. The system is definitely strained.
So I think when you look at some of the costs associated with the operating and we really looked into those, the, the behavioral health SUD facilities and the, the ones that existed throughout the state, I think the, the most common result came back that very financially difficult to operate these facilities because they don't cover their own costs. So any, any opportunity we could have to share some of those human resources that provide services in both the incarceration facility and a nearby, adjacently located SUD behavioral health facility would, would benefit us.
Have we talked to the tribes about potentially some kind of partnership there where we build that, you know, that behavioral health SUD portion? Where, you know, maybe we share some beds or something like that? Because I know they have the same issues as well, but, you know, if we can pool some, I, I don't know the, the deeper numbers and analysis of it, but if we could, on the surface, if you could pool some resources with the tribe, you know, that might be, that might be beneficial.
Yeah, so we got, so I, I think we actually have the data now to do that.
Okay.
So we can, we can talk about, here's the cost associated with modifying our existing jail to, to include this treatment. And then here's the cost associated with just the, the brick and mortar construction of a, of a behavioral health SUD facility. Then operationally, absolutely looking for, for partners to come in and, and help us with some of those costs and programs that can, can help fund that is, is going to be important. But now, now we actually have up to date numbers that we can share with you on what those numbers look like moving forward, so.
One of the, I've got a series of things to say, but like, one of the positive things about getting the study money was that we kind of unlocked the bow wave of future capital budget investments. And so, if quote unquote, phase two was study how to do this, right? Or whatever it may be. I mean, we've unlocked the, a better ability to go further down the road. And I think what you're describing, I mean, if, in the end of the day, nothing is perfect. But right now, and as we've always operated, you know, people land in the jail and, I mean, they're cops, they're, they're corrections folks. They're, they're not necessarily built to be SUD or mental health professionals. And so, they land there and that's just the reality. They land there first a lot of the times. And we want to be able to, like, like we've said, have a, have a jail of the future that recognizes our modern needs around these problems and the fact that we have to get people the help they need so we can get them back on their feet again, hopefully. But also recognizing that. But also recognizing that, well, two big things. One, I mean, for any community, this is an enormous cost at the end of the road, right? To see it all the way to fruition. And like, I want to make a commitment to you that I'm on board until the very end to make it happen. Whatever I gotta do, as long as I'm here, I will put everything I have to make, to help you. If I gotta go door knocking for, I will do that, right? And then, of course, you know, we had, a year ago or so, we had our, kind of our work session on kind of the vision, and I'm like, super happy because I feel like that's now on paper.
Yep.
Right? And we got some options. But, of course, I mean, even Commissioner Shute brought it up at the time, our jail staff, right? That's a problem. And just because you have a new facility doesn't mean you have people to staff it.
Right.
And I'm kind of like, where my mind goes is I'm in the area of, we're not building it the jail tomorrow and this, or today, and this is today's problem. But can we believe in ourselves to fix the staffing at the jail or whatever has to happen, right? In the time period it takes to finally build an addition or whatever it may be.
Sure.
And I believe in us to do that. And I think with, especially right now, how much focus there is on public safety and staffing from frankly, both parties now. Both leading candidates for governor are talking about per capita police. And so I feel like the pendulum is starting to shift in a positive direction. I can't predict exactly what will happen, but we already know, me and Dan, we want more cops, we want more corrections people, we need more money. I mean, the world is not always that hard. If you want to attract workforce, you've got to respect them, treat them right, and you got to pay them right. I mean, you solve those things and you solve a lot of problems.
Yeah.
But anyway, really happy and anything I can do to help with the challenges, right? You know, I will be there to help with the challenges as well, you know, that come along with it. So that's my commitment to you guys, and so far, really happy with what's happening.
So I think now that we have some numbers and money left over that we can actually start to look at, what does that next phase look like, right? So definitely want to present this to the commission, get the commissioners' direct feedback on the proposals that are there. They have some options to take a look at. We have recommended options that they'll hope they'll follow. And then what do those next steps look like? So if we were to actually move forward in expanding the jail in its current location, here's the cost associated with that. What are the funding opportunities that we have to get the capital construction side of it? When you look at the staffing side of it, it's actually pretty interesting to see how we can configure it that doesn't have an exponential increase in staffing needs for correctional officers. So it actually, I think, is a pretty efficient recommendation for how we could move forward.
Technological process improvements.
It's actually more the, just the, it's actually more just the layout of it all, right? And so how you lay it out and with the staff that you need to actually provide those direct services in the mental health and SUD treatment and programming spaces. I think that it wouldn't, with the amount of addition that we can add on in space, it doesn't correlate to a same exponential increase in staffing.
You know, Travis, when I first talked, when you were first doing this, one of the things I recognized the most about it is, yes, there, it's different dollars for two separate classes of people that are actually going to end up in the same place. So it's sharing and an economy of scale that gets created if we do it specifically. And I think that's where the savings are going to go. And it may be a hybrid of what they're looking at now and what we do to be able to envelop all of it. Many hands make for light work. So yes, not every person in that building may be able to do everything, but they can do this, this, and this. And on top of that, I believe, just like you said, there's going to be more money for this specific issue. And when it is, if we're in the position to take advantage of it, we'd be wise. And that's money that we spend here that is not going to have to be spent over here for the same people.
Yeah, Dan says this all the time, we're a small community. We don't have the same resources as everyone else, but we're smart and we can still do big things. We got to believe in ourselves to do big things and smart things, right? And this is one of those things, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. The price tag is going to be big, and it's going to take all of us pulling the rope in the same direction to get it done. But at the end of the day, it's an asset our law enforcement needs to be desperately updated and fixed around so the workforce challenges aren't so severe. But then also, we need to have that central kind of, and maybe I'm wrong, but I view it as like, this is the starting place on the board for many of these people. And to the extent that you help them in that facility, but it gives you a chance to triage to the many other things that, I went to the park thing for SUD in Neyland Park recently. I didn't know half of those things existed in our community. I mean, I knew there was a lot, but, and sometimes you wonder, are we too siloed? And are we, you know, connecting people with the appropriate things at all times? And if this is already, like, unfortunately, the first landing spot for people, it makes a lot of sense to be able to triage people where they need to go to all of our other resources from there. And so, like I said, well, I don't think it'll be perfect, nothing is, but that's, Kevin's talked to me before, it's challenging work. I mean, when you start asking about, you know, what does success look like? I mean, it's really hard, especially when talking about SUD, you know? Addiction's a powerful thing, you know? Ask me how I know.
And I do not want to throw a monkey wrench into what you're doing, but we, last year, legislature passed Jail Modernization Task Force, so I'm on that task force. I don't even know what the recommendations are actually going to work out to look like. But they're going to look a lot like what you're talking about, right? So you're already like, Commissioner Neddon says, you're already getting in front of it. So as soon as I get you any of that data, I will get it to you as soon as possible so you can put it in your planning and make sure that it looks like what the Jail Modernization Task Force is kind of coming up with what they're going to look like. But it's going to look a lot like what you're talking about.
And the consultant teams that we had, they're, I think, are definitely very attuned with, what does the, what does the new standards look like, right? I mean, being involved in county work for a few years, you definitely have seen shifts of how do you structure, how do you build facilities to incarcerate people? And how do you manage them, right? And so they've gone from direct supervision to indirect supervision to all this, or actually offset that, indirect to direct. And I think that they're actually starting to focus on more of the programming side of things, and I think this actually provides that. So I'm hopeful that the checkboxes that you're going to create in your requirements, if you want, if you want external funding to help you build these facilities that are necessary, then you have to meet these criteria. I'm hopeful that this is going to actually.
And so am I, but like I said, I'll get it to you as soon as I get a sneak peek. I'll get it to you guys when it's made public.
Great.
What the work products look like.
Great.
It could change.
Yep, yep. Well, and like I said, I haven't formally presented this to the commissioners as a group, so we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks. And we definitely wanted to share with you guys because you guys were instrumental in getting us the funds to actually do the study, so very much appreciated.
So any items, we'll start with the commission first. Any items that are not on the agenda you'd like to throw out there?
Be prepared, some of the committees that I'm on, you'll be getting more of the priorities from them also. One important one is revenues, or WASAC, where we developed a work group to look at revenue auctions for counties. And so you brought up some of them, that there'll be a lot more. Public Works Board, obviously, you know, we've got, want to keep those, keep that money with the Public Works Board because infrastructure's not getting younger.
Well, and money's not cheap anymore, so money's expensive. So that is very important. It's more important now than it was years in the past when you could bond at a very low rate.
Right. Well, I can't tell you how many jobs have come before us or bids have come before us to get more money because it exceeded what we were.
Oh, tell me about it. We're talking about billions and billions of dollars, or just on, just transportation side, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And on a side note, I do want to thank you for everything that you've done for Turning Point. Also a special spot in my heart, and you guys have helped us with so many different things. That's why I want to thank you. And when you're available, go take a look at the new stuff that we've done.
I mean, what about the tent? So I will see it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're working on a new childcare center for them. And then also, the funding formula should be getting studied and fixed, you know?
Thank you.
We're getting closer to that date.
Thank you.
Sad we had to extend it out, but that was the reality of getting it done, so. I kicked and screamed a lot, but.
Good, good. That totally helps Turning Point, but it helps a lot of the other agencies across the state. So you guys are definitely making an impact across the state. And I want to thank you so much, Ben.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, just a couple of things in closing. First off, thanks for your time. I think we might have been able to beat the school traffic now, so we've maybe figured that out. But yeah, just a couple of other things that are on my mind. Just, I know, Dan, you and I are meeting with DOT here in a couple of weeks to talk about 101 and Lynch Road again. Loretta's been doing some work with DOT as well on that. And so just putting that on your radar is, you know, having conversations with folks that live out in that area, business owners in that area as well. It's a challenge still, even with some of the improvements that they've made in recent years. So I appreciate you taking the time to meet with us and DOT to help at least have that conversation again and maybe get them thinking about some future improvements in that area. I know everything from intersection improvements to speed traffic cameras that have been brought up to me is, you know, to get people to slow down through there. So really open to anything. Just want to make sure that that's, you know, not something that we forget about as that relates to that whole corridor being just really kind of a dangerous stretch of highway. The other thing is, just thank you also for your support for Belle Fair Sewer, even as recently as last session. It sounds like we're underway with our work with the city of Bremerton on that. And so that was a $3 million-ish to both jurisdictions. So look forward to continuing down that path and exploring the partnership opportunities. And your vision on that and your support for that has been just crucial. So appreciate the effort in the legislature on that. And then just also to reemphasize, just that utility relocation conversation also from last session with Fish Passage Projects and the effect that that has on local utility providers and having to relocate when DOT and others come through and do their projects. I know you guys were successful in getting some money into our PUDs and I think us as well for a project in 302. What's that?
Close, but not quite.
Oh, we didn't get any?
That's right.
Okay.
It was there until the end.
Yeah, it was there until it wasn't.
That's right.
Fallen soldier.
We'll take a moment of silence for that $250,000.
That's all right.
Yeah. But it's, you know, I think a lot of times, it's just, it's one of those forgotten elements of these projects that are, they're important and they have value. And I think the money's great, but also the important thing is, I think, for there to actually be some work plan alignment between utility providers and DOT on these projects so that, you know, we're looking not just to the next construction season and fish window, but, you know, a couple of years down the road so that there might be some coordination on, you know, if we're doing work out in an area. And DOT has a fish project for that area, that there's some coordination. Same with our PUDs and so on and so forth. Kind of as Loretta said, you know, those additional costs that the state doesn't contemplate when they're building these projects, it falls directly to our taxpayers, our utility rate payers. And so you guys did a great job on getting some money for that last session. And so I want to thank you for that, and I'm sure that that's going to be something that's on top of people's minds going forward as well.
Well, thank you for that, and I look forward to helping with Lynch Road. There's a lot of ideas that have been forwarded in the past of maybe even not even having the intersection there, but having a way to get to a real intersection that's down the road, which would be my preferred pathway. I think that would be the right way to go. DOT will tell you, I am a squeaky wheel on event horizons, right? I want to see a timeline, and I don't want to see Belle Fair ever happen again. We dang near bankrupted a utility provider that barely was resourced, and they're just now on their feet, and it's taken us a lot of effort to get them back on their feet. I don't want to see that happen again. And I don't want to see DOT paving like 16 times. That was the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen, and I don't want to see that. So we're trying, I'm pushing really hard to get DOT to make sure those local utility providers are the first ones that we talk to instead of the last ones. And they assure me that they're changing the way they do it because they don't want to repave 50 different times as well. I know that number keeps going up, but I am very frustrated. That's why I keep doing that. But thank you, Commissioner.
It's funny, the, sometimes the first answer was the right answer. Lynch Road is back to doing what they were first.
What we should have done a long time ago, yeah.
That was the first thing, we took it to the public, did everything, went through all of it, and then somebody that wasn't even in the room changed her mind.
Value engineering.
Yeah, it just kept, it turned.
But I think that's where we got to go, and I think that's what I'm going to push for.
Yeah, I think you're right. The community thought you were right. Like I said, they already went through all the work and did it all, and then it changed.
We built a perfectly good overpass less than a mile away. Come on, that's where it should be, yeah.
So again, hopefully we'll get you out of here on time. I thank you very much for coming in. Travis, I want to thank you again. I really believe that this, the idea of dealing with these other issues within the jails is the beginning of something that in the next couple of years, this early investment is going to put us in a position to really take advantage of it. And I don't want to let that go easily without making clear on that. Thank you so much for all your work on the infrastructure. I appreciate people in 302 and you being on top of all that. I appreciate the conversations that we're having, also based on all those comments that are coming in on Facebook. And I appreciate it. I look forward to Lynch to circle those out and to discuss them further. With that, is there anything further that you have, Mark?
That's all we had for him today.
I just have one thing, you put on your radar, I was doing some talking with peers this morning, and 51% of our critical access rural hospitals are at risk of closing. And over 30% of them have closed their OB. And that just starts a downward spiral. If people have to go to an urban area and to get OB, then they take the risk of medical care there, and then it just starts to spiral. So as you get into session, you hear that, and I'll be over there talking about it. Just put that on your radar because it's kind of a big thing for the rural areas.
Yeah.
Mason Health is doing a good job, but I mean, all of them are on a razor-thin margin right now, so.
One of the things I, on appropriations, constantly trying to protect our critical access hospitals and everything else, because there always seems to be one or two things that crop up that are trying to tear it down. Very important for our rural communities. And we'll just keep playing defense and keep fighting, but totally hear you on the OB side as well.
You have anything for us in closing?
Well, no, I mean, thank you all for what you're doing. I already told you that I really think you guys are doing a stellar job. You're keeping taxes low, you're making sure that the roads are stellar. So thank you for that. Continue to keep in touch with us. You know, we work way better when we know what is really broken on the ground and the real way to fix it. A lot of times, you'll get a King County-centric way to fix something that isn't going to, that won't size to a Mason County way of doing things. And we need to know when those things, you know, come up. And so stay in touch. We're happy to work here, and thank you for that.
Use me as an example of Seattle. One size does not fit all, I assure you.
Yeah, I echo that and just appreciate the collaboration between all of us, including Drew as well. Couldn't be here, but also puts in a lot of hard work. We work hard as a delegation, and it makes it easier when we have folks like you to work with and the priorities are pretty cut and dry and maybe not simple to solve always, but like, you know, but there are things we absolutely need. And I don't know if you find that same dynamic in every other county, or maybe they're asking for completely different kinds of things. But it has been a pleasure working with you and look forward to advancing our agenda in the next legislative session.
We're careful with what we ask for, right? Maybe if we can do it ourselves and it makes sense, then we try and do it ourselves. But the things that we come to you guys for, for help in and solutions for are things that we just, we can't do on ourselves. Or it's a significant impact to a very small population of folks like some of our smaller utilities. So definitely appreciate that. We're careful about that.
Specifically, language changes, regulatory changes, the burdens that states, the state puts on you. Like my service on local government helps, can help that way in that area a lot. So if you have specific like language changes, it may be. So if you have specific, like, language changes, it maybe is not money, but it's bureaucracy, nightmare stuff, get a hold of me soon and get a hold of me early, so we can start tuning some of that out.
We'll definitely have some, some language from Dave and his team and Cal and Scott. Did you have anything that you needed to bring forward?
No, they covered what community development was looking for, which would be funding for infrastructure specifically that supports housing.
Yep.
So that's what...
And we've got some projects here coming, right? I mean, there's some, there's some big potential housing projects coming.
We broke ground and kind of, you know, on some projects up in Union.
Yeah.
There's, you know, potentially going to be a lot of housing up there cropping up in the future, and that's exciting. And of course, you know, we're seeing some growth, but we're going to probably see more growth in the future with the new dry dock in the shipyard in the north side of the county. And people will be refugees from Kitsap coming to the much more affordable Mason County to live. And, and so a lot of the infrastructure work we're doing right now is to try to put us on the best foot possible.
Yep.
And you always have a plan till you get punched in the face, says Mike Tyson, Tyson, but, you know, we should be able to rebound from it a little bit. We can put some Vaseline on it and make sure it doesn't hurt so bad.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. I want to give a motion.
We have a way to...
It has to move to second, we adjourn, Harry's no objection.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.